Call to order the November 21st meeting of the Cary Town Council. We have two of our colleagues missing this evening. Councilmember Jennifer Robinson is attending the National Leagues of Cities and Mayor Pro Tem Lori Bush is on a family vacation out of the country. At this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Yerha for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Yerha.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I can't let this opportunity go by without recognizing the fact that today is the anniversary of one of the most important dates in the history of North Carolina. November 21st, 1789, seems like yesterday, doesn't it?
To Jack.
You remember, don't you?
Yeah, I remember.
But it was exactly 230 years ago today. That was the day that North Carolina ratified the United States Constitution and officially became a state, joined the Union. Wasn't as easy as it sounds. It took over two years in the making for this to happen. By comparison, Delaware took about two months back in 1787, but we took about two years. Governor North Carolina, Samuel Johnston, was a staunch supporter of the Constitution and hoping for ratification, he called a Constitutional Convention in July of 1788 at St. Matthew's Church in Hillsborough, which is still there, by the way. After about two weeks of discussing and disagreeing and suffering from the heat, remember this is July in an old church in North Carolina, the vote was taken and they voted not to ratify. But instead, they drafted a Declaration of Rights, similar to the Bill of Rights that we're familiar with, but a Declaration of Rights for North Carolina, and they listed 26 changes they would like to see in the Constitution. They wanted 26 amendments right off the bat. Well, time passed and all the other states started ratifying little by little. George Washington was inaugurated as president early in 1789. The actual Bill of Rights was drafted and that included some of North Carolina's concerns. And I suspect, North Carolina not wanting to be the last of the original 13 states to ratify the Constitution and join the party, Governor Johnston decided to call a second Constitutional Convention, this time in November 1789 in Fayetteville. It only took about a week before they voted and they voted to ratify by a vote of 194 to 77. There's a lot of delegates for a state that wasn't really big in those days, but they still attached a list of concerns that were not satisfied by the Bill of Rights to their ratification, but at least it happened. So it was November 21st, 230 years ago today, that North Carolina became the 12th of the 13 states to officially join the Union. We beat out Rhode Island by about six months. And very soon after that, Vermont led the next group of states to join and pretty soon we had 37 additional stars on our flag, the flag to which I now invite you to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, sir.
First order of business is to adopt an agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second and a third discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. And we now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And at this time, I'm going to go to the podium for the announcement of the Hometown Spirit Award. If you were here with us earlier tonight, you got to hear the amazing accomplishments and contributions from each of our three nominees this evening. And at this time, I would like to recognize them once again. Please stand when I call your name. Anthony Blackman. Sharon Lake Gargano. And Frank Yarber. So now's the time and our 2018 award winner, Guy Mendenhall, is going to join me in announcing the winner of the 2019 Hometown Spirit Award.
Drum roll. You have a drum roll? Great. I love the sound effects. I know, I'm working on it. It's my privilege to announce the winner of the 2019 Hometown Spirit Award is Anthony Blackman.
I'm not going up there. Congratulations, Anthony.
Thank you.
I can't think of a better winner. I know the two nominees were fantastic. They were amazing people. I think they're probably going to win in another year, but this is your year. We're so proud for you to be our Hometown Spirit Award winner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I can't tell you how honored I am. Coming from Lee County, coming up here to NC State and wanting to make a difference after graduating, this really is great, wonderful thing. But I tell you, I wouldn't be here without several people. And I don't want to go on too long, but these are people who really helped me along the way. Dick and Jean Ladd, mentors, took us under their wing and helped us so much when we started our business here. The Ashworth family, Daphne, that sweet, kind soul that we all miss with that beautiful smile. And Jerry and Jean Miller, very, very special people to us. They came and embraced us and we owe so much to all of y'all as well. Y'all have built a great, great community. The vision that the old guard created, y'all followed through with that. We are truly blessed to be a part of this community, but thank y'all so much. I am very grateful for having my family. Thank you.
So now we move to our second item under recognitions, reports, and presentations. And I would like to invite at this time Gregory Richardson, Executive Director of North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, and Danny Bell, President of the Triangle Native American Society, to join me. Thank you both for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You know, we had a talk a few months ago about Native Americans in this state and in this area and in this town, and it was an eye-opener for me. And I'm so grateful that you brought that attention to this, to me. And I would like everyone to now hear a proclamation recognizing November 2019 as American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas, North Carolina American Indian Heritage Month is an opportunity to honor and celebrate the history and heritage of North Carolina's American Indian population. And whereas, American Indians have lived in North Carolina for more than 12,000 years. And whereas, more than 122,000 North Carolinians distinctly identify themselves as American Indian during the 2020 U.S. Census, which identifies North Carolina as having the largest American Indian population east of the Mississippi River and the eighth-largest American Indian population in the United States. And whereas, North Carolina is home to eight state-recognized Indian tribes that are statutorily recognized by the state as the, oh, I'm not going to, help me with these.
Koheri.
Eastern Band of Cherokee.
Hallowa Saponi, my tribe.
Lumbee.
Maheron. Okanichi Band of Saponi Nation, Saponi, and the Wakamal Suan.
Thank you. I've never had anybody assist me in a proclamation. Whereas, North Carolina is home of four urban American associations that hold membership in the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, and they are Cumberland County Association for Indian People, Guilford County Native American Association, Matrelina Native American Association, the Triangle Native American Society, and whereas, the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs, the North Carolina Museum of History, and Indian tribes and organizations have established true partnerships designed to assure an Indian-American Heritage Month celebration is held annually. And whereas, American Indian Heritage Month serves to educate and increase a public awareness of American Indians, both from a current and historical standing. Now therefore, I, Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, North Carolina, on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim November 2019 as American Indian Heritage Month in the Town of Cary and commend its observance by all Cary citizens. Proclaim this 21st day of November 2019.
Mayor and members of the Town Council, it is an honor. Thank you for this proclamation. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to our Town Manager, Sean Steigl, for his update.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to remind everyone that North Carolina Chinese Lantern Festival returns to Koka Booth Amphitheater tomorrow night. This is truly an incredible event, one of my personal favorites. If you've been before, you have to come back because all of the 27 displays are new this year. And several of the lanterns are interactive, including a Land Rover Lantern, as well as a step playing piano like the one in the 1988 Tom Hanks movie, Big. You remember that movie, Jenny? So I guess it's technically, yes, right. So I guess it's technically impossible to have been to it before because it's different all the time. The Lantern Festival is open most nights through January 12th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. and you can get more information, including tickets, on the Town's website. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Very good. Looking forward to seeing it. I was hoping to see it last night. I got caught up in a meeting, but I'll definitely go see.
Good deal.
Okay, we've come to the third item on our agenda called Public Speaks Out. If you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, we've included instructions for speaking on the forum on the printed agenda. And I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out have three minutes for their comments and speakers may speak on anything they would like, as long as it's not a public hearing, and that's to your benefit because you get more time to speak at a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium. Starts off with a green light. When the green light turns to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that's the instant that I will interrupt you. Again, not trying to be mean or rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. To have an efficient Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting, I would ask that if you're here with a group, have a spokesperson speak on behalf of your group to reduce repetitive comments. And if you'd like to speak next after the current speaker, that's that you wait over there in the stairway so that we know, one, there's another speaker, and so, two, that we would have an efficient Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
I am Lois Nixon, and as you know, Cary was founded in the mid-1800s by the Allison Francis Page family, who were in the timber business. 25 years later, they moved south to Blue's Crossing in the Sand Hills and founded the Town of Aberdeen, where they continued their logging business on longleaf pine trees that had been drained of sap by the turpentine industry. Thankfully, about 100 years later, people and elected officials in Cary realized that they needed to protect Cary's trees and its appearance during the development process. Tree ordinances and an appearance commission, and later a tree board, were put in place in the 1970s and 80s, which was important as Cary had been discovered. I am proud to have been a part of that appearance commission for six years in the early 1980s. Citizens and developers worked together to maintain Cary's appearance, and many of the trees saved then are specimen and landmark trees now, such as the ones on the former Kildare Farm Dairy in front and across Kildare Farm Road from Trader Joe's, 10,000 Villages and Hallmark. Developers grumbled a bit, but were rewarded with boom times and good prices for their high-quality development, with houses and buildings tucked in among the trees. Sadly, too many of those saved trees have been allowed to be cut down since that time. Now I fear that there will be no more beloved wooded neighborhoods like mine, as clearcutting of development sites has become the norm. Examples are all over town. The medical buildings on Kildare Farm Road next to the fire station across from the hospital are a perfect sad example. That site was beautiful wooded neighborhood, but was clear-cut down to the orange clay and covered with concrete buildings, concrete walkways, and concrete roads. According to a 1991 Forest Service publication, there are about 170 large shade trees per acre on such a site, meaning that over 3,700 trees were destroyed on that 22-acre site. Now there is not room to grow a tomato plant there, let alone a shade tree to improve the air quality. I'm told the trees required in the ordinance were planted on another site, but that doesn't help this site. Soon, the Environmental Advisory Board will be presenting new tree recommendations. I hope that the top priority will be prohibition on clearcutting trees on development sites. I'm shocked by statistics that since 1996, about 400 acres of land per year are cleared in Cary. If half of that is forested, there is an estimated loss of 34,000 trees each year, but we are not planting 34,000 replacement trees per year. This clearcutting trend must be reversed immediately if Cary is to remain the best of all places to live. One of my favorite books is Dr. Seuss, The Lorax. It's about beautiful truffula trees, a factory that has biggered and biggered, a super ax hacker, and the resulting dramatic and rapid environmental degradation of water quality, air quality, health of the animals, and livability.
I'm sorry to have to.
Can I say one last thing?
Yes.
From The Lorax, a note to all of us, unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is John Loyack, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Page Walker this evening. Specifically, I want to share our concerns as we have over the years for one of the Town's most important historic buildings, the iconic 1874 Ivy Ellington House, which has existed on the streetscape of this historic portion of Chatham Street for almost 150 years. The Friends are very, very appreciative of the commitment already made by the Town Council to purchase the building and the acreage and to repair and restore the house. You've given the present and future generations an irreplaceable treasure. We ask that you take another look at the enormous opportunity that exists if you retain the Ivy Ellington on its present location, and ask that you look at the Ivy Ellington not only from a preservation perspective, but from an economic development perspective, to view the Ivy Ellington not as a problem to be relocated, but rather as an opportunity not to be missed, a welcoming gateway to the newly-developed site on West Chatham. However, if after due deliberation, the Council decides the Ivy Ellington must be moved, the Friends ask you to consider the following for the benefit of the citizens of Cary and the preservation of this treasure. Number one, retain ownership of the house to ensure its preservation and preserve the house according to Interior Department standards for national registered properties. Two, engage the State Historic Preservation Office in capital area preservation immediately and throughout the project to ensure the continuation of its national register status and a successful move. Also, maintain the involvement of the Town's Historic Preservation Committee to advise Council and staff on their ongoing decision-making process. Number three, consider fronting the Ivy Ellington on Academy Street, perhaps where the old library is located. The Friends were advised by SHIPO that if it were located on Academy, the Ivy Ellington would regain or retain its national register status if the Town involved them during each step of the relocation process. Number four, assign a preservation easement to the property to assure its future preservation and make sure the Ivy Ellington is well-buffered from buildings that might be placed on adjoining properties. Ensure that the scale of the buildings placed in the library site is compatible with the pedestrian scale that characterizes Academy Street. Cary's a very special place, and people from around the world have moved here to take advantage of what we have developed. In the future, as new people and businesses consider coming to Cary, one of the things that they will judge us by is in regard to how we respect our own history and historic properties. Cary will not enhance its reputation as a great place to live by mistreating its own historic treasures. As Cary citizens, we look forward to working with you to preserve this very important house that will make significant contribution to the vibrancy and quality of life in downtown. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. I'm Leigh Williams, and I'm not here to speak to you about the environment today, not directly anyway. When we moved back to Cary 10 years ago after living six years in Europe, we sought a house close to the Greenway with sidewalks and an area where we could walk to school, and we did just that. In fact, the Northwoods Greenway cuts right through our backyard. From our back gate, we can go right and get to get to Northwoods Elementary in about five minutes or less to get to West Cary Middle in about 12. So when we moved in, I was surprised to learn that most of my neighbors did not allow their kids to walk to West Cary when it was so close. I didn't understand why they were uncomfortable with allowing middle schools to cross the light at Maynard and Evans until I tried it myself. It is a large intersection, and the left-turning lanes have a green light, which means go, while walkers headed in the same directions have the walking man. It can feel like a game of chicken. Then a crosswalk with a blinking indicator was put in from Godbold to across Maynard to Black Creek Lot, which I was elated about. But it wasn't long before I was hearing that parents felt the need to accompany their kids across this crosswalk, even eighth graders. Ridiculous, I thought, can't you trust your kids to walk across the street without you? But again, I quickly learned that it wasn't just the kids that cars weren't stopping for. On my own walks, I too would push the light and watch cars, even a town of Cary work truck once, blow through that crossing. So last spring, my seventh grader, who had long since been walking home from school without me, she had a group of friends typically, having well-trained, been well-trained about how to cross the street, was on her way home from school. This particular day, I neglected to tell her that she was due for a haircut, so she didn't see me waiting in the parking lot in my car. When she approached the second part of the crosswalk, she failed to push the indicator light. The car in the lane furthest from her saw her and stopped. The car in the lane closest to her was slowing down, and it was clear to me that that car was slowing down. She started to cross the walk, and suddenly that car just went. It was a small SUV. She hardly made it into the second lane before that car passed through the crosswalk, barely missing her. I jumped out of my car and I ran up to her. Zoe, I said, you almost got hit. She immediately dissolved into tears. Mama, she said, I felt the wind on my back. After hugging her tight, I asked why she hadn't pushed the light. Clearly, she had been taught every time to push the light. Nobody pays attention to it, Mama. We just don't bother with it anymore. My best guess is that the driver of the SUV never noticed my daughter standing at that cross. My guess is she was trying to figure out why the other car stopped, and then, but then again, I'll never know. In recent months, there has been an alarming increase in the number of pedestrians that have been hit in the Triangle, including several in Cary. Two women have been killed and one child remains in the hospital, all in separate incidents in our town. I am requesting that changes be made. It looks like I'm running out of time, so I'm just.
You're out of time, but if you would like to leave your comments with a clerk.
I will, and I just want to say, I believe if we're serious about protecting pedestrians, we just need to do some kind of intensive campaign to teach people, to raise awareness.
Thank you.
And I will leave comments.
I'm Marla Darrell, and I'm a long-term member of the Friends of the Page Walker Hotel. With recent activity on the Northwoods Association proposed development, the Friends have formed a committee to focus on protection of the historic Ivy Ellington House, which would ultimately be impacted. I've volunteered to serve on that committee. And during our last meeting, we discussed coming to you tonight, and I offered some advice. I said, if I were you, I would say this, which is why I'm here instead of them. First of all, we appreciate the attention our concerns are being given by the staff. Anna Redling and Dana Widmar have responded to our requests, met with us, and showed a genuine interest. Sean Steigl has maintained contact with us, providing a comprehensive update on Council's recent work session. These are the actions that strengthen partnerships, and for that, we say thank you. So how much do we care about the Ivy Ellington? In our preservation program, What Have We Got to Lose?, we give a very special designation to a very few historic structures in town, and that designation is this, LDIFOB, Lie Down in Front of the Bulldozer. And frankly, we mean it. The Ivy Ellington holds that distinction, as does the historic Nancy Jones House. The Town's acquisition of both of these properties tells us that you value them too. So for helping us avoid a very dramatic demonstration, we are very, very grateful. Three years ago, exhaustive efforts were made by the Friends to work with the developer to preserve the Ivy Ellington in place. Unfortunately, this did not result in the outcome we had hoped, and it does not appear to be where this is headed today. So we are now focused on assuring that this architecturally-important structure retains its status on the National Register of Historic Places. We have heard that the Ivy Ellington may be relocated to the old library site. We believe this could be an appropriate location, fronting Academy Street, if approved by the State Historic Preservation Office and the federal keeper of the National Register. As the former library site RFQ and RFP are developed, we ask to be considered a constructive member of the team, participating and providing input at this critical juncture, as well as any plans that are made to move the structure as those plans are developed. The Friends of the Page Walker cherish the mutually beneficial relationship we have developed with the Town over the years. We continue to honor and respect it, and we hold it dear. After all, we would much rather work with you than LDIFOB any day.
Thank you, Ms. Darrell. Next speaker, please.
My name is George McDowell. May it please your honor, esteemed members of Council, Mr. Steigl, Ms. Simpson, and Ms. Johnson. A few years ago, Council approved the townhouse development on a little less than three acres in District D. This evening, Mrs. Nixon spoke to the general, and tonight I'll speak to the specific. Before construction began, an abandoned house and shed on the lot were demolished and carted off. 144 beautiful trees were cut down, and the lot was then stripped entirely of topsoil and graded. Two of those 144 trees were deemed champions under Cary's ordinance. Statutorily sufficient reasons were given, and Council approved their destruction. These are the trees that were removed without discussion or consideration. One sugar magnolia measured 10 inches at breast height. Four Carolina ash trees, averaging 12 inches diameter. Seven cedar trees, averaging 17 inches. 11 hickory trees, 16 inches. 16 maples of various families, averaging 18 inches. 45 pine trees, averaging 20 inches. And 6... And 60 oak trees of various families, averaging 19 inches. Several dozen trees were planted after construction, most arborially insignificant. They were all illegally planted and improperly nurtured. Not surprisingly, seven of those trees died by the fall of 2018. Several more didn't survive the winter. The remaining trees have no chance of survival. The property has been transformed from an air-purifying acreage into a net positive pollution generator, and from land that absorbed 98% of the rain that fell on it to a plot that now pumps 98% of that rainfall onto adjoining properties. It is often said that an owner has the right to develop her property. I suggest it is time for society to begin to address and enforce the corollary obligations that arise in the exercise of that right. We are breathing air now in a mixture never before inhaled by our race. It becomes dirtier by the day, month, and year. In the past, we blithely assumed when we cut down trees that the-- In the past, we blithely assumed when we cut down trees that the air we breathed would be purified by trees somewhere else. But the somewhere-else's of the world are disappearing, and doing so at an exponentially increasing rate. The Secretary General of the United Nations says we are close to the tipping point, that time at which the damage we are causing cannot be undone. The federal government, staring directly at this train bearing down on it at speed, does nothing. I respectfully suggest that this committed council and the best administrative brains in the business can and must figure out a way to replace those 144 trees, trees that would have, over their lifetimes, absorbed millions of gallons of stormwater and drawn down from the air millions of pounds of carbon, ozone, and particulate matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Anyone else for public speaks out this evening? Anyone at all? Can you move to your left, please? Thank you. That one.
My name is Michelle Conlin. I'm a resident of Wood Forest Drive, and I'm here to talk briefly about the pending rezoning and annexation actions, 18 RES 11 and 18A8. We, the neighbors, and the public around the proposed property have been enthusiastic participants in the public participation process since June 2018. As you know, I've sent countless emails, submitted maps, wrote an analysis of the Triassic Basin soil, the dangers of developing a dense development on this notoriously unstable shrink-and-swell soil basin. I've included engineering analyses, citations from USGS, US EPA modeling. This actually is my field of expertise. And I've consulted with others, with my colleagues, and referenced documents. At any rate, it's the email that I sent to all of you, October 10, 2018. We followed up with petitions signed by our neighbors citing why the proposed Toll Brothers Development for Town Homes does not meet Cary's considerations for rezonings. We had an enumerated list that I've met with Scott and Deborah, and they took copies of the materials I provided. We met with Councilmember Robinson because she was not able to attend one of the public hearings. And as you know, we've spoken at every public hearing. So to zip ahead, June 27 this year, the action was scheduled for a final vote before town council, and just less than three hours before the meeting was to start, the developer withdrew the agenda item, recognizing that there was such fervent disagreement with the proposal. And at this point, it's a proposal for 99 townhomes nestled on 22 acres within a neighborhood that's 350 acres and currently has 70 homes total. So I've shown you the map and the pictorial on how this would actually-- Look, if it were crammed in there. This is not a pod that you're inserting. This is a tumor into a healthy community. And Cary considers existing and unique communities and preserves them. So we were encouraged when the developer withdrew the proposal from vote, June 27, November 6.
Sorry, your time has expired.
Uh-oh. Okay.
You can leave comments with the clerk, and she'll make sure that we get them, if you would like to do that.
Okay, yeah, my comments are specific to the staff report.
Okay.
Yeah.
She'll make sure we get them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Anyone at all? Seeing no one will close Public Speaks Out and move to our fourth agenda item, which is the consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have local firefighters relief fund board appointment, Act 13 amendments to land development ordinance, 19 REZ 02 Alston Avenue PDP and consistencies statement, 19 REZ 15 Shreve Fitzconsoira Temple of North Carolina and consistencies statement. Call for a public hearing for the following annexations: 19A15 Rui &amp; Elite Souza, 19A16 Smith &amp; Smith Developers LLC and Dole, 19A11 Branston LLC, 19A17 Pendograph Evangelist Hilliard &amp; Presser. Second Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for the Maintenance of the American Tobacco Trail. We also have consideration of the fiscal year 2020 sidewalk priority list funding. Condemnation resolutions to secure necessary easements for the Black Creek Green Wake Phases 1, 2, and 5 renovation project. Wake Med Soccer Park Facility Improvements Bid Award. Bid Award for wastewater pump station improvements and Talloway Pump Station Parallel Force Main. Bid Award for the Reedy Creek Road Widening Project. Would councilmembers like any of these projects pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent--
So moved.
There's a motion--
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes for their comments. Our first public hearing is for 19A14 Kathy S. McLamb. Planning manager Wayne Nicholas will introduce this hearing. Council may take action after Mr. Nicholas and the public's hearing. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This request is for annexation of 1.649 acres of property located at 105 Saunders Grove Lane in the southwest corner of the Good Hope Church Road and Saunders Grove Lane intersection. The annexation also includes 0.85 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is contiguous to the corporate limits. It's located within Cary's ETJ and its owned office, Research and Development. The request is not associated with a development plan or rezoning. The property owner is wishing to connect the site to Town Water Service.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for item 5.1, which is 19A14 Kathy S. McLamb, and I invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
Make a motion to approve annexation 19A14.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. We now move to our second public hearing, 5.2, which is 19REZ 21 Green Level Church Road rezoning. Assistant Planning Manager Deborah Granin will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board. The item will return to the council at a future date for action. Ms. Granin.
Good evening, council. For your consideration this evening is a request rezoned approximately 18.6 acres located at Green Level Road, Green Level Church Road, and Fussell Avenue. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. It is located west of Green Level Church Road, south of Alston Ridge Elementary, and east of the new Alston Ridge Middle School. The current zoning is residential 40, mixed-use overlay district, and watershed protection overlay district. The applicant is requesting to rezone to transitional residential conditional use, and the overlay districts shall remain in place. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the use to townhomes, accessory uses, and neighborhood recreation. Would require a maximum of 90 townhome units, which would equate to 4.8 dwelling units per acre. Would require a 30-foot wide Type A streetscape along Fussell Avenue. Would require a 30-foot Type B buffer along the western property line. A 5,000-square-foot minimum community gathering space area, which is approximately 1,000 feet wider than what's-- or larger than what's required by the Land Development Ordinance. Would construct public streets or streets to a public street standard and offer them for dedication. And would provide a pedestrian connection between the east and west portions of the property. And locate stormwater control measures underground. The site is impacted by stream buffers and floodways according to our most recent GIS data, and field determination of such features will be required at the time of development plan review. In staff's preliminary analysis of the proposal, we found that the live, work, and shape chapters are most directly applicable to the rezoning request. According to the growth framework map in the Imagine Cary Community Plan, the site is designated as mixed neighborhood, and townhomes are in appropriate use in this neighborhood. We have observed that there's a large number of townhomes and multifamily residential in the vicinity, but we've also noted that the proximity of the site to RTP and close to schools would make this an appropriate use option in this area and would also help to support the policies of the work chapter. In regard to the shape policies, the townhome development could help to provide a transition between the school uses and the adjacent residential uses on single-family lots to the south, and then the buffers also help to serve to provide appropriate transitions. According to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan, a street-side trail is required along the frontage of the site along Green Level Church Road, and the trail will provide bike and pedestrian access to the Alston Ridge Elementary School north of the site. Green Level Church Road is shown as a future four-lane median-divided thoroughfare with street-side trails on each side. Staff mailed notification to property owners within 800 feet of the subject property, and this exceeds the state requirement of notifying adjacent property owners and our LDO requirement of notifying property owners just within 100 feet. There was a neighborhood meeting here at Town Hall on October 2. We had six attendees. They had questions and concerns about traffic, connectivity to the south, and the height of the townhome units. We've also received community feedback in the way of phone calls and emails. We've had one citizen who's contacted us several times, seeking additional information and expressing concerns about stormwater. And then there were two members of the Waterford Estates Homeowners Association who came in and sat down and met with staff to talk about their concerns specifically about traffic, and they expressed a preference for detached residential. In regard to traffic, they also were expressing concerns about connectivity. I'd like to point out that Seahorse Court currently ends in a cul-de-sac, but the right-of-way does abut and goes right up to the adjacent property. And so the question came up, can they ask the applicant to offer a zoning condition to prevent this connection from taking place? And as you know, that's not something that we can evaluate at this time. It would have to be evaluated at the time of the development plan, when we can look at those stormwater issues and look at the stream buffers and look at the topography. So while there is a possibility that there's going to be plenty of connection opportunity and access to the site off of Fussell Avenue and Green Level Church Road, we advise the citizens that the applicant can't offer that zoning condition at this time, because we just don't have all the facts in front of us, and we will evaluate it at the time of development plan review. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present, and following their comments and the public hearing, I will be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granin. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
My name is Bahati Moutisia with Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein, land use attorney for this rezoning, representing the applicant and my homes. I also have with me Mr. Ross Massey with Stewart Inc., who's an engineer for this project. I'll be splitting my time, our time to speak, so I'll speak briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Ross to give some additional comments. Thank you, Deborah, for giving a very great overview of our request. I just want to highlight a few points. As she mentioned, the site is within the neighborhood, the mixed neighborhood designation in the Future Growth Framework Map, and one of the predominant uses mentioned in that designation includes townhomes. Just to highlight some other important parts regarding the policies that this product is consistent with in the Cary Comp Plan. Live policy 2 regarding housing choice. By placing townhomes here, we are adding to the variety of product types in the area. Regarding live policy 5 for infill development, given the site's location and shape, we think this use-- or providing a residential use here with supportive open space is a desirable use for this particular infill parcel. The shape policy 6 relates to transition. We'll be providing the streetscape and buffers along the northern and western boundary lines, which will provide a nice transition between this use and the schools that are to the north and to the west. Regarding serve policy 5 regarding restoring open space, we will provide a good amount of open space on the site, and will also preserve the stream buffers that are on the site, which will-- and the topography, which will be most visible to the neighbors, and which will make up about a fourth of the site. So we're preserving a good amount of the topography and existing conditions on the site, as is. The density will be about 4.8 units per acre, so while we are increasing the density, we are adding conditions that speak to the points that I just mentioned, but keep the density relatively low by preserving-- and also preserving a lot of the site conditions. And just to-- I know Deborah already hit all of our conditions that we're adding, but I wanted to point out that the 5,000 square feet of community gathering space is well above the requirement, which is 4,000, and that the streets will be dedicated to the public, which will then help with connectivity and helping with Cary's street network and the services that are provided. And of course, having the pedestrian connection between the western and eastern parts of the site will allow walkability and pedestrian connectivity within the site, and we will have the proper stormwater mechanisms on the site to avoid any adverse impacts to the surrounding uses. So overall, we think that this particular development will be an ideal location for this site, and I will turn it over to Ross to add some additional comments.
Thank you. We usually allow one speaker for the applicant, so future reference, I'll allow at this time. Future reference, please, just one speaker.
Okay, thank you.
And I would ask that you be brief, since you already had one speaker. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, mayor and council. So obviously, you've heard a number of good things about the site. I think the things that I would add, as a civil engineer for the project, that our team is committed to doing a thoughtful design, one that is considerate of the natural features on the site, the significant stream buffers and natural features, but also to make sure we're meeting connectivity requirements for the site by providing a commitment to provide pedestrian connections by the areas that are bisected by natural areas. We've met with staff, including transportation staff. We're going to be working to follow their recommendations on appropriate connections to Fussell, and then also appropriate connections to the perimeters of the site. And then our stormwater commitment, we felt was kind of being specifically thoughtful to this location by making a recommendation to locate those facilities underground, and that allows us to kind of provide enhanced open space areas that effectively operate as additional amenities. So those are the-- just the additional parts that I wanted to add to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now's the time for the public hearing on item 5.2, is 19REZ Green Level Church Road rezoning, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name's Scott Redman. I'm the president of the Waterford Estates Homeowners Association, and I'm honored to speak on behalf of our community residents, many of whom are present here tonight. I've seen them scattered. If y'all would stand up just quickly, thank you for coming. We have just a few concerns that we'd like to share with you about this rezoning request, which is located on adjacent property to our community. In this rezoning request, the application states, and I quote, "that the proposed zoning will provide housing in a growing area of Cary and will add product variety to an area with mostly apartments and single-family houses." We disagree with that statement, and if you look at a map of the surrounding area, which I've included as Page 4 of Exhibit A in the handout, I've outlined in yellow the areas-- the areas where there are already existing apartments and townhomes. Additionally, rezoning case seventeen RZ twenty-three, a nearby property on the other side of Green Level Church Road, outlined in blue on that map, has already been rezoned to allow for up to three hundred townhomes or multifamily homes. Approving this rezoning request for more townhomes does not increase product variety to this area. This rezoning request would permit up to ninety townhomes to be built on an eighteen-point-six acre tract that adjoins our community. One of the selling points that the applicants has stated at the community meeting that we that was held was that the proposal would result in a density that is lower than the allowed amount by the zoning designation. And on the surface, that sounds good. Ninety townhomes on eighteen-point-six acres seems like it would be a relatively low density at four point eight units per acre. But if you look at page five on Exhibit A, which is a preliminary document provided by the applicant, you'll see that a large portion of this acreage is not suitable for construction of residences. This will actually result in a density on the usable land that is much higher than four point eight. Waterford Estates is a lower-density, single-family home community with lots that range from point two to point five acres. We would prefer a zoning designation that would allow for more single-family homes on this neighboring property, and not limit it to just only townhomes. We believe this would both maintain a better architectural conformity on adjoining properties and support higher property values in the long term. Therefore, we would advocate for modifying the current rezoning request language to add verbiage that allows for single-family homes to be built on this property in the event that economic circumstances change, making it more feasible for that to happen. This change would increase the flexibility of use and negate the time and effort required to complete a future rezoning request if a developer decided that single-family homes would be a more desirable option. We've submitted to you a petition marked Exhibit B, which is signed by an overwhelming majority of households representatives in Waterford Estates. This position emphasizes the desire of our residents to have a single-family homes built on this neighboring property. It is also expresses our concerns that we have about safety in entering and exiting our community. Another concern we'd like to bring to your attention is the lack of adequate visitor parking in newer townhome communities. I actually own a rental townhome in a neighboring towns of Stonewater community, which is about a quarter of a mile up the road. That HOA must enforce a no-street parking rule because the streets are too narrow for emergency vehicles or service vehicles to pass if cars are parked on them. And there's also an inadequate number of parking spaces in the design. Often, when guests visit that community, especially during holidays, they must park off-site and be transported back and forth, or the owners risk incurring HOA violations. If townhomes are built on this property, we would advocate strongly that adequate street width and guest parking spaces are required in the design so that guests don't have to come and park in Waterford Estates. Cary's a wonderful place to live, and there's numerous reasons why my wife and I chose to move here in 2011, and we've never regretted that decision. I sincerely appreciate the inclusive and proactive effort that you, our town leaders, have put into planning and managing the explosive growth that Cary's experiencing. Additionally, the town staff that we've encountered, like Erin and Wayne, have been very approachable and sincerely helpful, and for that, we're grateful. Finally, I would just like to make, let you know that our HOA established and maintains an open and ongoing dialogue with the applicant. We just want to proceed in a cooperative and positive way that protects our property values and keeps our residents safe. Now I would like to turn it over to our HOA vice president for some more remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Samir Tiagi, and I'm one of the board members for the Waterford Estates Homeowners Association. So just like my fellow board member, Scott Redman, I speak here today on behalf of all the residents of Waterford Estates. So I'd like to shift the focus and address another concern we have, which is the ever-increasing traffic on the Green Level Church Road. Our residents have only one single access point in and out of the community, which is the intersection of Green Level Church Road and Winding Pine Trail. The traffic volume created by the residential and commercial growth on Green Level Church Road, combined with the traffic created by the addition of new Alston Ridge Middle School behind our community, makes it very difficult for us to enter and exit our community during the morning and evening peak hours. Because of the location, the majority of the traffic to and from the Alston Ridge Middle and Elementary School comes from the south side of Green Level Church Road, passing by our community entrance. So this creates a very heavy traffic volume twice a day during peak hours. Also, the Winding Pine Trail through our community is the designated bus, is the designated bus route to and from the middle school. We also have middle school parents that use our community unfortunately as a shortcut to the middle school, which we, which is presumably due to the heavy traffic volume at the designated car route. This compounds a traffic problem for our community residents. The town of Cary proactively provided additional funding to the middle school to expand the facility and provide for after-hours recreation and adult activity opportunity, which will also increase the traffic in our area. During the high-volume peak traffic hours, our residents have experienced several near-miss accidents while trying to get onto the Green Level Church Road from the Winding Pine Trail through our community. So we would like to advocate for a traffic light at the intersection of Green Level Church Road and Winding Pine Trail to increase the safety of all the individuals, including bus drivers and students trying to enter and exit Waterford Estates. Now, we understand that this single rezoning request on its own merit may have fallen below the threshold of hundred units needed to conduct a traffic study. However, we strongly urge you to take into consideration the cumulative effects of this rezoning request and other developments and other zoning, rezoning actions in our area on the traffic, which is jeopardizing the safety of those trying to enter and exit our community. It is our position that approving this rezoning request would make a bad traffic situation even worse by adding additional ninety townhomes. Finally, the land across the road from the Waterford Estates was purchased for a future park. If the access to this park is planned from Green Level Church Road, a traffic signal may also be useful there someday. Finally, I want to thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So I have a handout that's being circulated. My name is Lyndon Kirby. I live in Waterford Estates, and my home is in a lot adjacent to the proposed development tract of land. So in the photo, this is just a picture I took one morning coming back from running some errands for my wife, and so this, what this shows is basically traffic being backed up on Green Level Church Road. On the right side of the map, of the handout, you'll see just a map of the local area. The star in the middle is basically where I was at when I took the picture, and then the entrance to Waterford Estates and Fuscel Avenue are in the red boxes. And then I put the, the schools there just as reference, as well as the proposed tract of land under development. So one of the things I wanted just to point out is that this is about a mile from Fuscel Avenue, and so this is the typical pattern that we experience as we're trying to enter and exit Waterford Estates. And as my colleagues mentioned, at certain points of the day, peak hours, it can be very difficult and somewhat dangerous at times with people speeding along. So another point, so Kit Creek Road is at the very top of the map, and O'Kelly is at the bottom, so there's a lot of developed communities in that local area. Residents will use Green Level Church Road as a major route to access RTP and Highway fifty-five and going northwards Durham and Chapel Hill. So I provided this mainly to provide a visual evidence or just a visual that how bad the traffic can get in the area. And, you know, our contention is that the addition of ninety additional townhomes with, you know, one point five or so cars per household will only be adding to the traffic as well as potential dangers to the community. So in summary, I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues had said, but, you know, we're definitely, we have concerns. We do support the environmental aspects of the proposal that we, we heard in the October meeting, the keeping a minimum two hundred-foot stream buffer, the walking trails and paths that would connect and get zigzagging paths in the area. So we also support the decision that was mentioned earlier to not connect the proposed cul-de-sac in Seahorse Court to the community. And so the petition was submitted where eighty-three percent of the, our community had signed. And with that, I will thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for questions or comments before we send this along.
I got two questions. So first speaker in the attachment talks about owning a place at towns at Stonewater Community, and I'm wondering if you might explain the difference. Do we know if that one's private or public streets in that community where they have a parking problem?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can find out for you.
Because I was wanting to make sure that if, if this one's going to be built to public street standards, which I saw on the, that may alleviate some of these fears of parking on the streets, even on one side, to allow emergency vehicles by. So if they compare, I don't think it's fair to compare one townhome community to the other without knowing the difference in the street widths. So I think that'd be good for the, for the community to know that. And then the other comment is like was already made, it looks like if you're going to dedicate a quarter of it to green spaces, probably because you have to dedicate a quarter of it to green space because there's, there's streams there. But, but, and I certainly understand that, so no question.
Other comments?
Do we know yet, or can you tell me if the five thousand square foot gathering space, is that one space? Is that two spaces?
It would need to be centrally located, and we usually look at development plan to make sure that it's significant. They'd need to have it, the four thousand would need to be one space, but then they could do the other additional one thousand that they're offering someplace else on the property.
So per the ordinance, the four thousand.
Right. We would look for that to be significant and all contiguous and sort of centrally located or conveniently located for the residents.
Okay, just because she's not here, I'll just put on my Jennifer Robinson hat for just a minute and talk about community gathering spaces and let the applicant know how much we value those and how meaningful they are for our community, especially as we grow, that we ensure that future development provides ample, not just adequate, community gathering spaces. We tend to like those that are significantly greater in size than what otherwise is required by code. It adds value to the community and for all the reasons it, you know, Miss Robinson so eloquently states. Because bottom line, five thousand square feet's a seventy-foot box, you know? So anyways. I also heard a concern mentioned in the public comment about the single-family development to the south, the concern that getting in and out of their neighborhood's challenging at times because they only have one access, but yet I'm hearing concerns about connectivity to the future potential development to the north that could provide them another access or two to their development, maybe making their access to their neighborhood a little easier. So I'm, I'm hearing some conflict there that to the residents, you might want to, I don't want to say work on your messaging, but maybe help me better understand that conflict. Because I, I'm hearing it's hard to get in and out, we got one access, and, but I don't want it connected to the north. So that, that's a little difficult for me to understand at this time. Other than that, those are my only comments or questions.
Anything else? Yes?
It also, I mean, clearly from the picture of the cars backed up, that happens every day. I don't know what can be done because it's already a four-lane road.
I was going to speak to that.
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. If this is your first time, don't let it be your last, and I want to talk about the process, where we are, where we've been, where we're going. The neighborhood meeting, the reason we have that here in Town Hall is so everybody gets factual information. It's not that we're advocating for or against a project, it's so that you can be here and hear from the applicant and our staff and know that what you're hearing is true, because in the past, we've had things that were, let's say, conflicting. So that's what has happened so far. Then we have a public hearing where the applicant presents their case to the council after they have met with staff, and then the council hears from the public on this proposal, and that's what's happened this evening. And what's going to happen next is this is going to go to an advisory board of citizens who have been trained just a little bit about how the community, Cary Community Plan works, and they're going to determine whether or not this matches the Cary Community Plan, and they're going to provide that recommendation back to the council. By the time we get it, several months will have passed from go to that decision date, and so we still have at least a couple of months to go. And so the council at that time will have information from staff, a recommendation from staff, input from our citizens, will have input from our citizens advisory board, and at that point, we'll make a decision. Again, please know, and I guarantee you that council members don't advocate for or against a project, especially this council. We have ninety years of experience on this council, and they've kind of heard it all and seen it all before, so if a developer's blowing smoke, or if they're talking about pretty things, pretty pictures, unless it's a condition, we got to do worst-case scenario. So that's where I'm coming from, and I think my colleagues think the same way. Getting to your point, I was getting there. Green Level Church Road is a state road. The state determines whether a traffic signal has been, can be installed. That doesn't mean we go, hey, that's not our problem. What that means is we collect and provide information to NC DOT because they're the decision-makers to decide whether a traffic signal can be installed, and we work very closely with NC DOT to make sure these things can happen. I was very encouraged to hear that you're already working with the developer and already working with staff. Keep doing that, and ask your questions about traffic to staff. Although there, I heard a request for a traffic study, although it doesn't meet traffic study requirements, there's probably traffic information that staff has from that area, from all other developments that they can provide. So that would help understanding where this road is today, where it's going in the future, what is planned for this road as far as funding. I don't know if there's funding to change this road or not, and what NC DOT is thinking, how far they are from their criteria to trick, trigger a, trigger a traffic signal, and those types of things. So work with the staff. Deborah Granton is the contact point. Am I correct?
Erin Puckett is our senior planner on staff, and I'm also available. So her contact information's in the letter that went out to the neighbors, so they have a way to reach her and me as well.
And if you forget all that, you can go on the town's website and look for agendas and find a past agenda, and you click on it, and you find this item, you'll find that information. And if you forget all that, email me. I'll get you to the right person. So that's, I want to make sure everyone understood where we are and where we're going, and know that your comments are well-heard and well-respected, and that goes for the applicant and our citizens. And we want to make sure that this is the best possible outcome, whether it be townhomes or anything else. We want to make sure it's the best possible outcome it can be. So that's what I wanted to let you know before we move this on, and at this point, unless there's other comments from our council, it'll go to the planning and zoning board. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, it's not exactly to this, but it keeps coming up, and that is that from my perspective, in recent months, past year, it seems like every application is coming in with this new algorithm that, that talks about the need for less parking. And, you know, maybe this is a tutorial I need, but I really think we, I hope that we're looking and taking a hard look at some of those assumptions. We've lived in the past where we've had less parking in certain places, and, and they were designed basically with the assumption that everybody owns a subcompact. And, and this was even after the days of the Hummer, but, you know, there's still a lot of cars out there that don't fit in a lot of those stalls. I, I'm just getting a little concerned about voodoo math, and maybe it's something I've got to better understand, but it's coming up over and over again, and I don't know if at a quarterly meeting or at something, you know, a, a brief update of, of how the staff looks at parking requirements. And... And what in this new wave of thinking makes us so comfortable that we believe that we can get by with this much less parking? Because we do, and we hear repeatedly of people that come to us with these stories about this no parking. And the example tonight was the one where they have to park somewhere else. I mean, I understand private streets, I understand public streets, I understand all that. But, let's just call it an intuition of mine, but I'm just not feeling that comfortable about how we're doing that. And I just see this happening more and more. I just want to be comfortable with it, that's all.
I would like to clarify too, because I did hear one of the citizens talking about the 1.5. With this case, the applicant has not requested a reduction to the LDO parking standard for townhomes. So they would be expected, it's two spaces per unit plus .25 visitor parking. So thank you for bringing that up. They have not saw a reduction with this.
Thank you very much.
And also, I'm sorry, maybe also if they would be, if somebody that works with signal warrants in the state would let them know about that. Because my understanding from working on issues up and down High House Road, that unless there's a vast increase of traffic from the side, you very rarely get a stoplight. And it's not how many people go up and down the main road, it's how many people are coming in from the side streets. So if they're not increasing the number of people from the side street, it's just a long shot. And I think we need to make sure that they don't
Absolutely.
Hope that they're going to get a light just because traffic is lined up in front of their house.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Okay. As I've said, this is going to our Planning and Zoning Board. They'll probably see it in January, February, January?
And, yeah, and the citizens can reach out. We'll have the information on our website if they'd like to know when it's going forward.
So that means it's probably February at least before we make a decision. So there's plenty of time. Please make sure to contact us with any questions. Thank you, Ms. Grannan. We now move to our third public hearing, 5.3. It's the Farrell Property rezoning. And, oh, Ms. Grannan, once again, will introduce the item, and council will not take action on this item either. It will go to the Planning and Zoning Board and return to council at a future meeting. Ms. Grannan?
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately 7.79 acres located at 1033 Ferson Road. This case also has an associated annexation petition that is not being presented for a public hearing tonight. That's going to come before you next month. And the action on the annexation will not occur until it's time to take action on the rezoning request. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. As I mentioned, it's adjacent to Ferson Drive, and it's located at the intersection of Morrisville Parkway and the American Tobacco Trail. The property is currently located in Wake County and is owned R40 watershed. The applicant is requesting R20, residential 20 conditional use. We don't see that very often. That means a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size. They've also asked for the watershed protection overlay to be applied to this property. The site is impacted by a stream buffer, according to our most recent GIS maps. And the Park's recreational and cultural resources master plan calls for a future street-side trail along Morrisville Parkway. Ferson Road is a local road, and Morrisville Parkway is a four-lane median divided thoroughfare. I would like to point out that this property, because of its size, is eligible to be subdivided under certain exemptions through the North Carolina general statutes to where it either could be expedited or exempted from the subdivision process. So that means that there's certain improvements that would not be required, such as road widening and the installation of a street-side trail. We presented that information to the applicant and those concerns when they first came in and talked to staff, and they responded by proposing certain conditions that would help move this proposal a little bit closer to what you might get if it was subjected to a development plan. So they've proposed a maximum density of six residential lots, six residential dwelling units, no lots accessing Morrisville Parkway. They've proposed to dedicate right-of-way along Morrisville Parkway, provide a 20-foot greenway easement, provide a 30-foot streetscape along Morrisville Parkway, and provide a 50-foot Type B buffer adjacent to the American Tobacco Trail. In addition, the applicant has also proposed paving of Ferson Road with curb and gutter along the subject property frontage. In our preliminary analysis of the plan and the proposal, we found that the live shape chapters are most applicable, and noted that the subject property is located in the Green Level Special Planning Area, and this would be an appropriate use in that district. This shows you the location of the subject property, highlighted with a star. It's a neighborhood west of Flat Branch, where the large 20,000-square-foot lot would make appropriate transitions to the adjacent uses. This shows you the American Tobacco Trail, which, as you know, is paramount importance to Cary, and is indicated in the Imagine Cary Community Plan as being something that should be preserved and protected. And the applicant has addressed that by proposing the 50-foot Type B buffer adjacent to the trail, highlighted here in green. Adjacent property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified, and the property was posted and advertised. And as mentioned earlier, this exceeds the state requirement of notifying just the adjacent property owners, and our LDO requirement of notifying within 100 feet. There was a community meeting here at Town Hall on September 4th. We had one attendee, and the citizen was concerned about stormwater and traffic. We've also received email regarding the multiple rezonings in the area and the potential impact to traffic and roads and the aesthetics of the area. This concludes staff's presentation. Following the applicant's comments, and the public hearing will be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan. This time, I'll invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Tony Tate. I'm a landscape architect and land planner, 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. Here tonight to present this resounding case to you, it's a very regular-shaped piece of property, which I understand is not many regular-shaped pieces of property left to develop around here. But this one has its own unique characteristics, given that it's on one side of Ferson Road. It has a very long linear shape, and it's basically a continuation of the estates at Montvale, which is to the north, where Montvale Ridge Drive comes down and ties into Ferson. And what we're doing is basically extending that road down, curb and gutter outside, paving the street, which is currently a dirt gravel road at that section. And so, we've offered the items as conditions to help make the request palatable as we can to get the buffer along the American Tobacco Trail right away for both Ferson and Morrisville Parkway. And so, all those things together, we think we're, again, just trying to continue that same type of development coming on down Ferson Road. And so, lot size is of a minimum 20,000 square feet, so it'll be large lots and nice homes. So, thank you for your time, and look forward to moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now's the time for the public hearing for item 5.3, Farrell Property rezoning. And I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
The picture that I saw of the north end, it looks like it's mostly filled with less than 50 feet of trees right now. So it looks like they're increasing the buffer, at least in that spot. Is that?
Oh, there's a lot of clearing. It was a family farm.
That's what I was getting at. So they're going from a field, so it's not like we're taking down, they're taking down hundreds of trees to, it's a field. And then they're going to have to widen it, the buffer, because the buffer doesn't look but maybe 20 or 30 feet max from the, okay? Just wanted to clarify that it's mostly a field.
Can I ask a question about the subdivision, I mean subdivision, subdividing point that you brought up? One, can an applicant offer a condition not to subdivide? I don't think that's possible, is it?
I don't believe that that would be an enforceable condition.
Yeah, that's what I figured. And what is the criteria lot size where subdividing is not allowed, or is?
Well, what they have is greater than five acres, less than 10 acres. So they could do an initial expedited process to come in and divide it into no more than three lots. And then they could come back in with those smaller lots that are less than two acres each, and they could subdivide those through an exempt subdivision process. So it would take a couple of processes to go through to get this, you know, to the six lots that they're proposing.
So that's all protected by legislation?
Correct.
Nothing we can do to stop that?
Other than to not rezone it, which when the applicant first came in and said, you know, this is what we'd like to do, and we expressed concerns about not getting some of the things that are expected as a result of a development plan, that's when the applicant came back and said, well, here's what I'd like to offer, starting with the 20,000, you know, square-foot minimum lot size, to help give some reassurance.
So other than what they've done already, what else could they do?
That depends on what they think will be successful in getting your vote for approval for the rezoning.
I mean, there's nothing, I guess.
I'm cautious about making suggestions about rezoning conditions, but if there's certain things that you feel are important to you.
The subdividing thing's important. So is there anything they can do to alleviate fears, you don't even have to say what it is, alleviate fears of subdividing?
Limiting the number of units
Okay.
Is always something that can be offered as a zoning condition.
Okay.
But they're offering six units right now.
For the overall, for the maximum that would apply to this.
If they did do the exempt subdivision route, they might have to have a couple processes.
Correct, to get to that point.
Get to six, and we would not get the paved road, the curb and gutter on, or the...
No, the zoning conditions would still apply. So they can...
For what we're getting now?
Right. To get that R20. Right now, they, right now, all they can do, first of all, they can't really do anything if they want to get water and sewer, because they're not annexed. If they're going to get annexed, then they need to have Cary zoning. So they're looking for that, you know, half-acre lots.
But through the, so maybe I'm not clear then, but through the exempt subdivision route, they could come in and just say they want to cut this into three pieces?
As long as they were 40,000 square feet each.
Forty thousand each.
Right. Under Wake County.
Under Wake County.
Right.
And then once they cut those into three pieces, then they could come back and cut those in half
Right.
To get to the six units.
Right.
That we would still end up with six, or six lots, but without the buffer to the ATT.
But then, but then they probably wouldn't do that, because they couldn't get water, or they couldn't get well-inseptic to serve the property
Okay.
On such small lots. They couldn't get the number of lots they want and be served by well-inseptic. They want to connect to public utilities.
All right, that helps.
So to get the zoning that they want, you know, and to be served by public utilities, you know, they have to go through this process, and they know to get that, they're going to have to make it more appealing.
Other questions?
And more, you know, better transitions to the adjacent neighborhoods.
Other questions or comments?
Okay.
This is going to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Grannan.
Thank you.
We now move to discussion items. We only have one. Item 6.1, bond referendum results and appropriations to projects. First, we'll have Chief Financial Officer Karen Mills and the Capital Program Director, Steve Brown, to present, to follow, to present items to council, and we will take it, or we can take action. Ms. Mills?
Good evening, council. Congratulations again on a successful bond referendum.
Yay.
As you recall, we've worked through a series of legal steps to get to this point, and we have one last legal step for you to take. But tonight, we're going to ask you to take two steps that will put our citizens' priorities to work on some important infrastructure components of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The first of these two exciting steps is a resolution, which is your last legal action regarding the referendum process. And then for the second step, Steve will recommend your action to authorize spending on eight projects through capital appropriations of this new citizen bond authority. An essential component of the citizens' approval process is for you to certify the election results from the referendum. After you approve a resolution that documents that certification, staff will advertise a public notice, and after a 30-day notice period, the results become official. So to wrap up the referendum process that we formally began a short six months ago, staff recommends approval of a resolution that is included in your staff report. And to cover the formalities for the state law surrounding anything debt-related, I'll read for the minutes the resolution title. Resolution declaring the result of the bond referendum held in the town of Cary, North Carolina, on October 8, 2019, upon the questions of approving $112 million Parks and Recreational Facilities bonds and $113 million transportation bonds. At this time, staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion's unanimous.
Thank you. Now, on to some budget action to get our projects started. As you know, staff has been working on plans for these bond projects since the day after the election, and actually some even before that. Because we have cash reserves, we do not have to wait to sell the bonds to begin spending money on things like engaging designers, bidding equipment, or purchasing land. We can borrow the money later by selling bonds in 2020 or 2021 and reimburse our cash reserves then. By selling bonds later, that also delays the debt payments, which won't start for at least six months after the bond sale, and will extend for at least 20 years into the future. That allows us to equitably share the cost of these important investments with our generation as well as the next generation of citizens, who will also enjoy the benefits of these projects. So today, to get started, we'll be recommending appropriations of that bond authority. And then after tonight, we'll keep things moving with these bond projects by asking you to appropriate funds at other regular council meetings through staff reports, through our rolling budget actions at our quarterly meetings, and through our adoption of our annual budget. For our first group of bond projects, staff recommends that we invest $78.5 billion in eight projects. And our capital projects director, Steve Brown, is here with me to describe those projects. And at the end of his presentation, he'll ask for your action for funding that will move our community forward as directed by our citizens in their resounding approval of the Shaping Carys Tomorrow Bond Referendum.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Following up on this good news and the success of the bond referendum, I'm very excited to be able to tell you about some of the ways that we're immediately working to begin shaping Carys Tomorrow. You will remember as we were educating our citizens that we developed this list of specific projects in need of bond funding to complete. This is also a good time to recall that how our values shaped this list, and as we look to serve all of our citizens while also working cost-effectively. So these values were our political values, our so-called now Bandian values that we talk about a lot, that we use to inform everything we do at the town. Those values include representation, social equity, individual rights, and efficiency. So I'm very pleased to ask you tonight to appropriate bond funds for some of these projects listed here on this slide here, and we, so that we can keep working on them. So let me tell you about these projects. In our parks category, the first one is we're asking you to appropriate $50 million for the downtown park project. We talked about this extensively at our recent quarterly meeting. We've also prioritized our oldest playgrounds and are ready to begin upgrading some of them right away. So we ask you to appropriate $1 million to upgrade and renovate aging playgrounds. We want to start first with Bond Park and the Rose Street Park playgrounds, which you see here, that are very much in need of upgrading, and bring them up to our current standard for play experience, aesthetics, safety, as well as shade structures. We're also asking you to appropriate $20 million for open space, so that we can be nimble in our response to acquisition opportunities as they come up. We ask you to appropriate $2.2 million for Annie Jones and Dunham Park tennis court replacements. This will replace our oldest tennis courts. There's 11 of them at these two courts. And this project will also add one new court at Dunham Park, bringing the total to 12 new tennis courts. You can see that these courts have served their full, their useful life and are very much in need of replacement. These new tennis courts will sport improvements like more space between the courts and better lighting. And this project is currently 50% designed with funding we had in place, and this additional funding will let us move to construction in 2020. We're asking for $1 million appropriation for the Penny Road We're asking for $1 million appropriation for the Penny Road School Park improvements, and that will refurbish this park site adjacent to the Penny Road Elementary School. We're currently working on an agreement with Wake County to take over the operation and maintenance of this site, and our project will focus on bringing the softball field, the multipurpose field, restrooms, and walking trails up to Town of Cary standards. This project is ready to go into design, and we need the money to maintain the progress on that project. So let's move on to our transportation category. We're requesting $2 million of street improvement funding, and this will go in addition to money that's currently funded. We have, we're pulling together a street program for this year now, so this will let us do even more this year than we had planned on. So expect to see a staff report in January. That'll have the street list as well as the bid results, and work will begin in the spring. Requesting $1 million for NC DOT betterments. With NC DOT is already breaking ground now on the 540 project in southern Wake County, we need $1 million appropriated now to address an immediate need, to enter into an agreement with DOT to start developing some of the betterments related to, namely with the bridge that they'll be constructing around Pierce Olive Road. So by betterments, we mean that we'll be able to add, enhance this state project to give it the Town of Cary look and feel and add features to, that we want to have in Cary. And one of the most important features at this particular location is to add a street-side trail to that bridge. So that will improve transportation opportunities in southern Cary. And lastly, $1.3 million appropriation for the Fenton Quinard Drive Extension Project. You'll recall, the developer of Fenton has committed to construct this connector street from Maynard Road to Trinity Road, and the $1.3 million will help us fulfill our part of the agreement to acquire right-of-way for this. And this project is in the design phase right now, and construction could be, will begin on the developer's schedule. So I hope you see that we've been hard at work already on all of these important initiatives, and that we're eager to continue working to keep Cary the great place that it is. We look, you can also look forward to seeing updates on these projects in your weekly report as they progress. So at this time, I recommend, staff recommends that council appropriate $78.5 million for these projects. This is about a third of the $225 million bond referendum, so we're making tremendous progress. This authorization on the projects I've described are shown here on this list here that summarize our recommendations. So this concludes our presentation, and we'll be glad to take any questions you may have.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Question. On the parks, I just want to be clear for the record that even though it's not on the initial one, Vets' Freedom Park was also part of this initiative in this bond referendum. Is that correct?
Absolutely, it's correct.
Yeah. Okay. It's just not being a part of the initial.
Initial.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we adjourn. Thank you.
Visit the Town of Cary website at townofcary.org.